Good evening. I'd like to call the council meeting Monday, December 4th to earlier. With Council Bailey, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor. Sue, will you call the roll, please?
Councilor Bailey.
Present.
Councilor Carbone. Councilor Clancy.
Here.
Councilor Durek.
Here.
Councilor Wotes.
Here.
Councilor Timbrow.
Here.
Councilor Zambrillo.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Forrest.
Here.
Mayor Ken Lesser.
Here.
Thank you.
Before we start our regular meeting, I'm going to ask for a moment of silence. Everyone, to think about the lives that we recently lost, you know, the tragic accidents that happened. We think of the families, we think of the people who lost their lives, and I ask all of you for a moment of silence, please. Now, open the line, we have five hearings tonight, and the first three hearings, these are public hearings, the first three are on the same topic. I'll turn it over to Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As you stated, the first three all involve one project. These are resolutions that are required as part of the application criteria for the state. This project is to replace the indoor HVAC system for Silasdale Middle School, and this is through a program that the state is running, and I'm going to ask that Vlada Shalcova come up and provide an overview of the project. She'll provide you the overview for these first three items, and then we'll do the public hearings and move on from there. So, Vlada.
Hi there. Good evening. My name's Vlada Shalcova. I'm the capital improvements project administrator. So, alrighty. So, staff has been working on drafting materials for the indoor air quality HVAC grant. Basically, the grant -- I'm a little nervous. Basically, the grant encourages public school districts to install, replace, upgrade their heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, their HVAC systems. Through this grant, the town would be receiving a 56 percent reimbursement for the project cost, if awarded. The grant application is due December 31st, and we are looking to submit the chiller, which is on the top of the roof, and the chiller cools water that helps cool the air down, and then also the gymnasium air handler unit that circulates the air. So, based on the 2019 Ashray HVAC applications, Chapter 38, the chiller and gym air handler units are past their useful life. Useful life is defined by about 20 years for both of these units, but due to the percentage of usage that the chiller encounters, it's using about 138 percent, where it should be at about 110 percent to have its best usage there. So, although it's 18 years old, its useful life has passed because it's past, it's using a higher percentage there. And then the air handler unit is at around 20 years old, so it's at useful life, so by the time we would be able to obtain funding, it would be past that as well. And then, I just wanted to let you know that we did receive existing conditions report, which are part of your packets tonight. If you've had time to review, I'll take any questions that you have there. But indoor air quality observations that were seen for the air handler unit particularly are regard to dehumidification. This unit, as it is right now, does not actually dehumidify the building, so although it may help, or it does help circulate the air, the cooled air, it doesn't dehumidify, which is linked to less appropriate air quality conditions. So, adding in the dehumidification through a newer unit would improve air quality in the building. And then, the observation for the chiller unit is that it's at that 138 percent capacity when it should be at about 110. So, it's just surpassed its life due to the continuing conditions that it's operating under. On October 16th, I believe it was, during the town council meeting there, the town council voted to appropriate $360,000 for this project, so we're already working towards moving this forward. And as part of the application for this grant, these three resolutions are required. This is a very competitive grant, so for us to be eligible, to qualify, we need to meet as many of the qualifications as we can, and these three resolutions are part of that process. Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Sure, Council Bailey. When a new equipment, is that going to run at 110 percent and last the 20 years, or are we going to run into the same thing?
It should be appropriately sized for the units. It should run at that 110 percent.
Alright, so the current units are undersized?
I can't say that they're undersized. I know that they're not running appropriately for that space.
I think it was a combination of the unit size, but also the way they were constructed, and there's not enough airflow around the units themselves, and that's part of this project, is to address that situation.
No, can't fix the past, but moving forward, as long as it's, we aim for the 110 percent and it lasts the 20 years.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Council Bailey. Agbels, yeah. Councilor Timbrow.
So, you said that there was, sorry, I feel like there's 360,000 appropriated for this. Is that estimate, like, confirmed and good, the 360,000?
So, the process of going through the cost of the project is we would have to go out to an RFP, Request for Proposals. We would do that once awarded, or once moving forward with that project, so we're not at that state right now. We did receive a quote in May from Airtemp that we were recommended to go towards that 360,000. So, as we move forward in the process, we'll be getting more accurate quotes, as you've been seeing, the equipment right now is fluctuating in cost, so we're estimating that that will be the cost, but we can't confirm that exact cost until we go out for RFP.
Okay. So, it could be more?
It will be, actually. The 360,000 quote was for the chiller only, not the chiller and the air handler. So, what the council approved with ARPA funds was the funding for the chiller, based upon that May estimate. We are getting additional estimates, and they are already running a little higher, but the 360 will count towards the match, and as long as we meet that match requirement, then we should be in pretty good shape.
Did we get a quote on, go ahead.
No.
Did we get a quote on the air handler, or no?
It's forthcoming, yeah. We're waiting on that one.
And the way that the grant functions is, they recommend that we have, obviously, as close to the full project amount that we can, but they take applications up to that 44 percent. In our situation, different towns have different reimbursement rates, so they can take any projects that are up to that. They look more favorably at projects that are funded as high to the total project cost due to sometimes overages for projects, but that's kind of how they assess.
Okay. Can I say one more thing?
Yeah. Councilor Timbrow.
I just wanted to confirm that there's, or at least as far as we know, when it comes to HVAC improvements, and just purely those two items that are needed, is that what, the chiller and, that your handler?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So, for this, is that the only HVAC improvements that are needed for Silasdale Middle School? Or is it just purely because of this?
That's what we're applying for.
Okay.
Any other council questions? So, it's a good.
Thank you, Mayor. So, just confirming, we just passed a resolution to apply for the grant, and if we do get approved, then we'll go into all the details, and make decisions on that.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Yep, so it does, the way that the, these projects work nowadays is that you can kind of ask for a project quote, but until they get in there, the engineers are able to produce drawings, and an estimator can get in, they're not able to really give us as solid of a quote that we can move exactly forward to, go out. You know, you have to go through that bidding process, because since there is such a high demand for this type of work at this time, the amount of effort that it takes to get that final cost and estimate is a lot of time on the engineer's end. So, until we're able to get engineer drawings and move forward throughout the whole process and go to RFP, we really can't determine the full project cost, because they have to assess the unit. At this point, you've seen the conditions assessment report, and you can see that they've noted in a couple areas that they didn't have access to this, or that, or the other, or it's based off drawings. It's because the amount of effort that is required to obtain such a close quote for all of the work that it's encompassed.
Any other council questions? So, there's no engineering account of this at all? The engineering hasn't gone in and done?
That happens after the award. The engineering costs will be taken into account for this project. We've received a quote for engineering work, which is around 73,000, but that's also without going out to RFP. That's an initial estimate, so, and that's part of the full project cost for the project, for this.
Thank you. Any other council questions? Since these are public hearing items, the first three, we'll take them on in time, first R-23-004. Are there any questions from the public on the same? Yes, Mr. Mayor.
My name is Bob Woodward. I live at 456 Middletown Avenue here in Weathersfield, and I am certainly not opposed to this, especially with the grant, but I want to go back to either last year or two years ago at this time, when a woman stood up here in public comments, said she had been at the Board of Ed meeting, and the Board of Ed needed similar HVAC equipment for, I think Emerson Williams School. And they had a date of early December, and I don't think it ever went through. Given that comment from that woman about the Board of Ed meeting, and given the 2018 evaluation of the schools, I just want to ask the question, are there other schools that should be on this list of getting grants for HVAC? I think that's important for us to consider at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments on this item? Okay, moving on to the next item.
We have to close the public hearing.
Okay. Close public hearing on C-1. C-2, R-23-005, dealing with the same issue. Is there any public comment? Hearing none. I close C-2, and move on to C-3, R-23-006. Again, the same item. Does anybody have any comments from the public? Hearing none, I close the hearing on C-3, and now we have C-4. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is amendments to the code of the town of Weathersfield, and that's for Article 19, Economic Development Improvement Commission, and for that, Joya Zach, our Economic Development Director, will provide you with the brief overview of what we're looking for here. Joya.
Good evening. Joya Zach, the Director of Economic Development for the town of Weathersfield. We are just proposing some amendments to the code in order to reflect the change in positions. We now have a Director of Economic Development and a Town Planner, which is a separate role, so we want the code to reflect the liaison, the staff liaison, is the Director of Economic Development. The second item is to formalize how the EDIC Chair and Vice Chair are selected, and have an annual vote on that by the commission. And the third item we're looking to add is to formalize the process and guidelines for setting up the subcommittees, whether they're permanent or ad hoc. So, those are changes that the commission had brought forth.
Thank you, Joya. Questions from the council? Hearing none. Thank you, Mayor. We'll open up to the public, C-4. Any questions on these amendments, changes? Hearing none, and we'll now close C-4. The final public hearing is C-5, a resolution creating a joint committee of the Town Council and Board of Education to improve communications and coordinate budget development and shared services discussions. So, the backdrop of this is, we are intending to create a communications committee between the Town Council and the Board of Education to foster better collaboration and communication between the two bodies, particularly during finance and budget matters. And this is something that we introduced at last meeting, and ask for a public hearing and potential action later in the meeting. Is there any council questions on this joint bipartisan communications committee? Any question? Thank you. Any questions from the public on C-5, the creation of a communications committee between the Town Council and Board of Ed? Yes, Bob?
Bob Woodward, 456 Middletown Avenue. I'm just going to add what I've said the last two times. Please, as part of this, talk about the 2018 report of the schools that's been buried, and if it has to be put on there in writing, please put it on writing. We need to hear that as a town. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else on this particular item? Okay, I'm going to close the hearing on C-5, and now we'll go to regular public comment. There are two public comment sections on the agenda, one now, and another towards the end of the meeting. During each public comment period, members of the public will have five minutes to speak on any issue. When you step to the podium, please state your name and address, at which point your time will begin. I ask that you address your comments to the entire council, and refrain from speaking directly to or about individual council members. I ask that you refrain from any derogatory comments or personal attacks, and please remain respectful. This section is for public comment. The council will not generally engage in dialogue during this portion of the agenda. If any follow-up is needed, please leave your contact information with the town clerk and the town manager. We'll get back to you. Anybody from the public wishing to speak now? Judy?
My name is Judy Keane. I live at 126 Broad Street in Weathersfield, and I am President of the Richard M. Keane Foundation. I'm here tonight not to beg, but to thank the council and the previous council for their decision to distribute ARPA funds for the nonprofits in the community. I would like to remind you of how these funds will be used for the Keane Foundation after school programs. We have been running the Keen on Kids After School Enrichment Programs for the past eight years, in partnership with the Weathersfield Parks and Recreation. That is an essential element, too, so please thank the Parks and Rec for their continuous help with registration, and the Weathersfield Schools District delivering engaging enrichment programs to all Weathersfields Elementary School children. In addition, almost 2,000 students in kindergarten through sixth grade have had, I think, sixth grade down to fourth grade already, fund an educational hands-on learning program in their own classroom. The rest of the grades will get service before the end of the year. These programs followed the school curriculum in each grade, including engineering, biology, nutrition, physics, and more, depending on the grade. Teachers and students all love this experience. This ARPA money will help to sustain and support programs in the future years. Happily, since my requests at these meetings, our donations have increased, so I think people have seen the begging. We thankfully have had, have many supporters in the town of Weathersfield who watch the Town Council meetings. I just want to remind everybody, don't forget the Luminary area for the holidays. They're available now at Weathersfield Travel, and I look forward to working with this new Town Council. I know that all of you will support the Keane Foundation programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Thank you for all you do. Further public comment? Further public comment? Okay. Hearing none, I will move on to council reports. Does any council have a report on any item? Moving right along. We'll go to council comments. Does any council have any particular comments they'd like to make? Hearing none, I will make a few of just a few upcoming events to remind the council and the public of. So, this Thursday, we have our wonderful holidays on Main from 5 to 9. I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce, the town manager, and all the town staff who are working so hard to put this event. It's one of Weathersfield's signature event. Thank you to the police for helping. It's a big event. I think we'll get between 5,000 to 10,000 people. We usually get that much, so I'm looking forward to it. I understand the weather's going to be cold. I looked at the forecast, it looks like the coldest day of the week, so unfortunately, but we'll keep each other warm with our attention, but unfortunately, it's going to be a little cold. On Saturday, December 9th, we have the Santa Pancake Breakfast, sponsored by the Parks and Rec and the WAPCD. I will be there serving pancakes. It's from 8 to 12 at Putkin. I was there last year, and we had about 400 people come to the Santa breakfast, and I found out that that was a very low number. They typically get about 700 people. So, if you want some pancakes, and you're planning and wanting to see Santa on Saturday, try and get there early. It will be a big crowd, and I hope to see you there. And honestly, on Sunday, December 10th, the De Sopro Funeral Home will be holding a holiday food drive. I want to tell all of you that this time of year is particularly difficult for families in need, and we have a lot of families in Weathersfield in need. We have a lot of food insecurity in Weathersfield, and if you can support the food drive, please do that on Sunday, December 10th, and that is from 9 to 1. If there's no other council comments, I'll move on to Town Manager's report. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just very quickly, playing off your comments about the holidays on Main, I just want to state, we have had some calls from some of the businesses down in the area concerned about the road closures. We've had to extend the road closures issue, and Captain's here, I'm sure if he had any specific questions, he can speak to it, but, you know, there've been several incidents across the country. We're on a high state of alert, given everything that's going on in the world right now. So, we've extended the road closures back, and we're not allowing any movement at all in a larger area than we did last year, and it's causing some consternation with some of the business owners. We're all working with them to try to make sure that we're able to provide for them during this time, but again, it's a very short period, it's about four hours, and we think it's critical for the safety of the public down there because of the large crowds we're going to have, that we maintain as much control over that as possible. So, if any businesses have any specific concerns, they can reach out to police or to the line office, and we will work with them the best we can. But again, we ask for their patience, and this is a major community event, and it's, I think it's important that we make sure that it's a safe one. So, with that, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Town Clerk's report, Sue?
Yes, I just have one announcement for all the residents. Sally Katz has asked me to just mention that, due to favorable weather conditions, Physical Services will be making their final leaf pickup throughout the town, starting on Tuesday, December 5th, which is tomorrow. This final pickup will begin in Area 11 and in Area 1, and all residents are urged to get all remaining leaves to the curb ASAP. Once the trucks pass through, they will not return to a street or area, so the residents all are just getting a little bit of extra time, which I know they'll all be happy to hear.
Thank you, Sue. So, everybody rake their leaves, get them out right away. Thank you, Sue, for that. Okay. Bids, I-1, purchase of unleaded fuel through Capital Region Council of Governments bid. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the crowd bid that we use every year to purchase all of our unleaded fuel. This is done competitively, but given the timing of CROG's process, once that bid is awarded, we have a very short window that we have to accept it, or we miss out on it. So, we're asking for your approval ahead of actually getting the number, but this, again, this is a competitive, competitive bid price, and it's usually a very good price. The crowd gets for us over here, which could probably speak to it, has a lot of experience doing this each year, but it's something we do ask you for the approval to allow me to authorize this bid, and then I will bring you the information in terms of what the actual amounts were, but we're still waiting on that, but once it comes in, we have to act on it immediately.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Any questions? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to put the motion on for discussion, at least, move to authorize the town manager to accept the CROG bid for the purchase of unleaded fuel.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not on a motion, but I do have a question. Council Bailey. Diesel fuel. Is that separate? Is it not in yet? Is it?
Yes, that'd be a separate bid, that they do it at a different time, so we'll be getting that. We should.
Should we act on that now?
I haven't been asked to act on it yet, so...
I don't know if two weeks is going to be too long. That's my only question. I understand the CROG bid, and they, trust me, that's the cheapest you're going to get.
I'm not aware that it's going to be needed for this morning. You could certainly do that, and we'll bring it back to you if we have it ahead of time, but...
Maybe the deputy mayor, if you change your motion of both. I just think it would be, it would behoove us to do both.
What's the recommendation, Mr. Town Manager?
Again, I have gotten the request for it from Physical Services, is for the unleaded fuel, but I do know that we do, usually, they do usually come close together, but I think the feeling is that we didn't need it for this morning, but I certainly could recommend that you go ahead and approve for both. It's the same process, same CROG bid, and that way, it will provide maybe the relief if needed.
Okay. Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to amend the current motion that's on the table, to add in the words at the end of the motion, "and diesel fuel."
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have to vote on that?
Amendment first, but first discussion on the amendment?
Any discussion on the, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. All in favor of the amendment, say, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody posed? Motion carries. Now, we're back to the main motion. We have to say it again?
Nope.
So, any discussion on the main motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the main motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody posed? Passage unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Bid number two, aye to, purchase of a Ford Transit van. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I asked this be placed on bids as opposed to consent agenda, because it did come in late, after we were able to get this together for your all review, so I did ask the captain to come to the meeting tonight to explain the timeliness of this, but this is a van to Ford Power Program, and Captain, if you could come up quick, just give a quick explanation of the timeliness of this.
Good evening, and thank you for letting us on the agenda at relatively short notice. So, back in October of last year, the council approved this whole of $150,000 in ARPA funds for the Weathersfield Police Department PAL program. That program is in, still being founded, it's officially founded, and we're working forward with it, but one of the things we'd like to be able to do is take some of that funding and be able to purchase a 15-passenger van for the PAL program, and also for use for the PD for different events that we have going on, our cadet program, for be able to ring officers to different trainings and so on and so forth. The reason of the timing is, as we started researching this as a need, we discovered that Ford Transit vans are in extremely high demand. As of right now, a dealership, Monaco Ford over Glastonbury, has agreed to essentially hold this vehicle for us right now. It's not even on their lot, pending the council's approval at the price that they cited in the documentation, so that's the reason for the timing on it, and we apologize for the short notice on it, but that's where we are with it right now.
Thank you, Captain. Council questions, Captain? What was the price?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Council Bailey? No, no, I'm just, a question for you. They, no. You're the boss. They were approved 160, 150. They have to come to us for approval on what they spend it on?
Anything over roughly about $35,000 has to come back to the council for approval.
And this is part of the PAL program. Maybe, Captain, if you'd take a minute, explain, we have a bunch of new councils about the PAL program before we vote?
PAL program, PAL is short, officially for Police Athletically, but we like to think of as a police activity league. It is a police-oriented community organization that is meant to help youth in the town that it is established in. Again, we're in the early stages right now. We have our board on board with the department. We're founded as a 501(c)(3). We have our insurance in line and everything else, and we're scheduling a big kickoff event sometime, hopefully in early February, to invite the town, invite the council to an event, to start getting the idea of what is needed for the youth in our town that's not already being offered, and how our officers can provide that program. We have a number of citizens in town who have agreed to be part of our advisory board and provide us support to be able to do this moving forward. So, this is the first, one of the first steps in moving forward in this program, and as cited here, in many other programs in other towns that have PALs, transportation is usually, or can be a problem for youth to be able to attend, so that's the purpose of attaching it to PALs, so that we have the opportunity, the ability to bring kids to it that would not otherwise be able to go.
Thank you, Captain. Any questions, Captain? Councilor Darrell?
I have a quick question. Thank you, Mayor. Was the difference, I mean, why is it such a big difference between the MSRP and the actual price and them?
The fact that they're in such high demand, that we've worked around, and that's the fair price, in looking around, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?[1792.62]
Captain, real quick, if we approve this tonight, is something you can purchase right away and then be able to use?
The dealership is waiting for a phone call tomorrow to say that the money's been approved or not, and as soon as it gets on the lot, we'll be able to pick it up and move forward with it from there. We're working on, working with some area partners for marking it appropriately and making a nice, big, visible sign for the department to use.
Thank you, Captain. Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to approve the purchase of the Ford Transit van in accordance with the documentation presented to the council.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Got it first. Counsel Clancy?
Yes. We have like a buzzer or a bell that we can hear.
Any discussion on the motion?
They give you any idea when it's going to come in?
We believe next week or so.
Oh, that's nice. Good. Will I all get to see it?
Soon as we get it, I'll let you know.
Yeah, we'll take a ride. No, but thank you. Any other questions before we vote?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to say that I absolutely love the PAL program. I think it's so important for the community, and I'm happy that you guys have the funds to do this, and I look forward to approving it.
Thank you, Counsel Timbrough. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor? Signify saying aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you very much.
Moving along, item J, the consent agenda. Deputy Mayor Forrest.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by counsel votes. Any discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
So now we're on item K, the approval of ordinance and resolutions, and this is the items from the public hearing. We have five of them. Item number one, Mr. Town Manager.
First item is R twenty-three dash zero zero four, and it's a resolution authorizing the superintendent of the Board of Education to apply to the HVAC indoor air quality grant program for public schools for the Silas Dean Middle School. This is the project that was discussed earlier. I will note that this board of events has passed a similar resolution as is required by this grant.
Any discussion on item... Deputy Mayor Forrest.
Move to approve the resolution R twenty-three dash zero zero four, authorizing the superintendent and the Board of Education to apply for an HVAC indoor air quality grant program for the public schools for the Silas Dean Middle School.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, I think Counsel Ambrello, second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. K dash two, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is R twenty-three dash zero zero five. This is the resolution that will authorize the establishment of a building committee for the purpose of overseeing this project. This is, again, a requirement of the grant, and this is for the same project, the Silas Dean Middle School HVAC.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the resolution R twenty-three dash zero zero five, authorizing the establishment of a building committee for the purposes of overseeing chiller and HVAC unit replacement at the Silas Dean Middle School through the HVAC indoor air quality grant program.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by counsel votes. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That would be bipartisan, and there'll be a vetting process?
Mr. Town Manager.
This body creates that building committee, says, and the mayor, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Motion carries. K dash three, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is R twenty-three dash zero zero six, and this resolution authorizes for the preparation of the schematic drawings that were referred to earlier and the outlined specifications for the chiller and the air handling units for the Silas Dean Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I move to approve resolution R twenty-three dash zero zero six, authorizing the preparation of schematic drawings and outlined specifications for the chiller and air handling units for the Silas Dean Middle School for the purposes of applying to the HVAC indoor air quality grant program.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Counsel Durrick. Any discussion? Counsel Bailey?
That has to come with a cost. Has that been listed?
Yes, it is. That's part of it. That's the roughly seventy thousand dollars that Vlade referred to earlier.
Good enough.
Thank you, Counsel Bailey. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Signify saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we have...
Four.
Four, yeah. Item four, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for amendments to the code of the town of Weathersfield, Article nineteen, Economic Development Improvement Commission, as presented.
Thank you. Do I have... Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the amendments to the code of the town of Weathersfield, Article nineteen, Economic Development and Improvement Commission, in which to summarize.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by counsel votes. Any discussion?
I...
Counsel Bailey?
Again, I do. I believe this is what we talked about earlier.
Do you have an amendment?
Oh, yes.
Not at this...
Counsel Bailey, you have the floor? Are you yielding?
Yeah.
No, I'm not going to be able to read it. It needs public notice for the subcommittee meetings.
Counsel Timbrough.
Thank you. That its change to notices will be published for subcommittee meetings for FOIA purposes.
Mr. Town Manager?
We do that as an amendment to what's proposed. This was advice given by Rich Roberts.
Works for Town Attorney.
Works for the town, so he's recommended this change. I think it's proven, given his review of it, so...
Discussions on the... Deputy Mayor Forrest.
What is the amendment? I don't think, I don't have an amendment before me at all.
Yeah, I didn't.
She just, just what she stated, notice will be...
Like, but there's a, this is a whole section, so like, where are they putting it and what section? Not they, but where is?
We'll work with the Town Attorney, make sure it's placed properly, but I would say we could even place it at the end of Section nineteen, and that would be sufficient.
I mean, I'd like to see if we're...
I would, too.
I don't, I don't have the, this is an ordinance, and we don't have like what the lang... I heard what language might be, but, and how it, where does it go and what is it? We don't really have the language, I think. Or I'm hearing that it was just like an amendment of this, with this language, but where does it go in the ordinance itself? I yield to certainly Ms. Timbrough or if Counsel...
I think it's just saying that there needs to be notice. Notice will be published for subcommittee meetings, so...
Just that line.
Just giving, yeah.
I'm not necessarily against the idea, of course. I just didn't...
Okay.
Deputy Mayor, further comments?
I'd like to see it in the ordinance in order to be able to vote on it, I guess.
Is there any time?
Well, I would just make the suggestion, so under Section ten dash five three D, the last change and paragraph, it's that the commission may vote to establish subcommittees, permanent or ad hoc. I would say that that language could be added to the end of this section. That's the appropriate place. What he's stating is that notices will be published for all subcommittee meetings in accordance with FOIA. Because that's the only section referencing subcommittees. I wouldn't see it any other location that would be needed, but that was just, but if you, if you want to hold off on that.
Well, it looks here like on the sentence, "Subcommittees will meet as an..." I'm sorry, Mayor.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, go ahead, please.
"Subcommittees will meet on an ad needed basis, and meetings will not be posted unless under special circumstance," which I think this is looking to address. So we can't have that sentence, I think, in with another sentence because we have contradicting sentences.
Right.
How am I doing, Cindy?
No, that's what I was thinking. It's been several hours since I read it last.
Agreed. So even if we add it at the end, then we still have to sort of modify that particular sentence.
Yeah. Just strike "and meetings will not be posted unless under special circumstances."
Or I think what you can do is you can modify that sentence.
Right.
And "subcommittees will meet on an ad needed basis, and meetings will," strike out "not," "be posted," and we'll strike out "unless" "under special circumstances," and the language is...
Just repeat. Counsel Timbrough.
Thank you. I yield?
Notices will be published for subcommittee meetings.
Published for subcommittee. I'm seeing this for the first time. I hope you like, I know you guys maybe are, there was some language obviously that was talked about before. Subcommittee, have limited authority. Okay. And then is there, yield to the Town Manager, is there a timeframe for the public, for the posting? I mean, in like, in other statutes which would govern this, like, you couldn't post it a minute before. I think that's not the idea.
In accordance with FOIA, with FOIA, from the Information Act.
And that has a timeframe?
And that will dictate, yeah.
And state FOIA?
Yes.
Do you think I could take a shot at an amendment on this one for you?
Sure. Mr. Deputy Mayor.
I move, I move to amend Section ten dash fifty-three D in the following ways. The sentence that was "subcommittees will meet on an ad needed basis, and meetings will not be posted unless under special circumstances" shall change to "subcommittees will meet on an ad needed basis, and meetings will be posted..."
Published, I think.
Excuse me. Published for subcommittee meetings in accordance with state FOIA.
Do we have a second for that amendment?
Second.
Second, Counsel Timbrough. Any discussion on the amendment? Counsel Ambrello.
I just think in the sentence you just said you had subcommittees in there twice. You had "subcommittees will meet on an ad needed basis, and meetings will be published for subcommittee meetings." Just redundant.
What'd you think, for those meetings? Because it's not for other, it's not for all meetings. It was just for the subcommittee.
Yeah, I just think, I just don't think you need the four subcommittee meetings. We're already referring to the subcommittee meetings.
It's acceptable to the Deputy Mayor who made the motion?
It is, but we have it on the floor. So...
Mr. Deputy Mayor.
I would recommend that we vote down the amendment. We'll do it back again, and we'll take out subcommittee.
Or can we just withdraw the amendment?
Not if it's seconded. Now it's on the floor. It's for everybody else.
Okay, so we have a motion amendment on the floor. I think there's a recommendation to vote it down, but let's see how the vocals. All in favor of the amendment? All opposed to the amendment?
Aye.
Motion fails. Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I move to amend to the following language. Thank you very much. Section fifty-three D, which states, "Subcommittees will meet on an ad needed basis, and meetings will not be posted unless under special circumstances," shall now be amended to say, "subcommittees will meet on an ad needed basis, and meetings will be published," excuse, yeah, "published in accordance with state FOIA."
Do we have a second?
Second.
Counsel Ambrello. Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, the last item here is item five, and I want to spend a minute on this. We talked about, this is the creation of a joint committee between the Town Council and the Board of Education. It's part of the strategic plan, the past, and the idea here is to improve communication between the two bodies, look for shared services, but particularly on budgetary finance, Mayor. It's going to be a bipartisan committee that will include Counselor Carr Bond, former Board Chair Chuck Carey, the Mayor, and the Board Chair. It will also include the Superintendent of Schools and the Town Manager, six persons on the committee, and this is for the creation, just to tend to improve communication, again, particularly around budget finance areas, but also potentially shared services. Anybody have any questions on this? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. No questions, but just a comment that I think it's good to have increased dialogue between the two largest boards in our town. One of the boards gives us and asks us for the most significant amount of our particular budget, and have early and often conversations among those two to develop trust, understanding of that aspect of our town is very important. So thank you for bringing it forward.
And Mr. Deputy Mayor, any other discussion? Do we have a motion? Mr. Deputy Mayor. Did you raise your hand?
Yeah.
You did. Okay. Mr. Deputy Mayor.
I move to approve resolution R twenty-three dash zero zero seven, to create a joint committee of Town Council and Board of Education to improve communications and coordinate budget development and shared services discussions.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second counsel votes. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Thank you. We have no unfinished business, no new business. We do, we do have a resolution for introduction. This is R twenty-three dash oh eight, introduction of a resolution creating a quality of life committee.
You could take it if you want.
Okay. So this is a new proposal, and I want to kind of review this a little bit with the council and the public. This proposed quality of life committee, its genesis was the incident we had on Silas the incident we had on Silas Dean recently with the mufflers, the loud noise, that we got so many different inquiries about that, concerns about that from residents. This committee would not be limited to that, but would take on things like noise, bright, excessive signage, other items in town like that that are difficult for residents, and this committee would explore, be a bipartisan committee. This committee would explore those issues, would work with the chief's team and other teams, but designed to work with the police on some of these quality of life issues. This is for introduction tonight, a proposal for any discussion, and then for possible action on our next meeting on the eighteenth. But again, this is a creation, for our potential creation of a Quality of Life Committee. Any council discussion or questions tonight? Again, we'll come back on the eighteenth for possible action. Counsel's Ambro.
Would this committee be appointing, or have members appointed in the way that most of our committees do, where we'd be getting recommendations from each party, and then the Town Council would be approving them?
So, yes, the thought, thank you, Counsel's Ambro, is we would have two counselors here, bipartisan, on it as liaisons, like we're doing with the school and council, and that we would have members of the public serve on it through our political parties. So the Republicans and Democrats would nominate some folks to join this committee once we get it established. Good question. Other questions about the Quality of Life Committee that we're proposing? Counsel Timbrow.
Do we know how many members we are looking to have in this committee?
It's a great question, and I think we want to have a limited number of members. We'll have two counselors, and I'm thinking three to five. It's hard to get folks to join any committee, and I view this as a pretty important committee, and we want people who are really concerned about this. But we haven't set a number, I think, for next week, next meeting, when we have the, to vote out, we'll come up with a number. But if you have a suggestion, or open ears, you know.
I was just curious.
But not yet. So we're going to form the committee and then come up with the appropriate number of members. But I think a small, relative, you know, we're going to find seven, ten, fifteen people to be on this one. Good question. Any other questions? Again, this is just for discussion tonight, and then it'll be up for possible action in two weeks. Okay? Hearing none. We will move on, and we are, oh, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Mayor, before you move on, it was brought to my attention that it's possible we didn't vote on the main motion related to the economic development, but that we moved, we voted on that new amendment after we were working through that. I'd just like to go through you to the Town Clerk to see if that is in fact true, and that we may still have an outstanding vote on the actual adoption of it as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Sue?
I believe that that did pass. They voted down the main amendment and then voted on the amendment.
But not the actual vote for the thing, then. Still need one more vote.
So I think there's supposed to be three votes, is I think. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, should have been three, yeah.
And we only did two. Is that correct, Sue? Okay, so, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Um, so I would like to move that we put back before us, K four, the adoption of the Code of the Town of Weathersfield, Article nineteen, Economic Development and Improvement Commission, for a final vote for adoption as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Ayes have it.
Now you have to pass the, now we brought it back on. So now I move the motion that's on the table, on Section K four.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Counsel's Ambro. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So we are back on to, moving right along tonight. We're back on item O, public comment. Does anybody from the public wish to speak at this time? Anybody from the public on any item? Hearing none. Item P.
Move to executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Ayes have it. Move to executive session. Thank you, everybody.